Welcome everyone to the Township Council meeting, Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting is now called to order. We all please rise. Councilman Venteri, please leave us in the flag salute.
Please leave and stand back.
Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement of public.
Take notice, the adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash eight and NJSA ten colon four dash ten as follows. The notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at two twenty-five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News in the record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the township clerk on said date. A link in a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www dot L F N J dot com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Present.
Councilmember Murphy?
Present.
Councilmember Hablets?
Present.
Councilmember Venteri?
Present.
Council President Scobha?
Present. We're going to take the minutes on two separate motions. Kevin motion to approve the minutes of November twenty-seventh.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Venteri, second by Councilman Murphy. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll for the minutes of the November twenty-seventh meeting.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets?
Yes.
Councilmember Venteri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes, Kevin motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of December fourth.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Venteri, second by Councilwoman Hablets. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Abstain.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets?
Yes.
Councilmember Venteri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Mayor, you know, the mayor is not in the room this evening, but he's going to be zooming in. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. At the risk of being a little ill the past few days, I wanted to make sure that I kept everybody there healthy, especially with the upcoming holiday. I didn't want anybody down for the count over their week out, especially all of our young men and women that are in the room this evening. So in order to keep everybody safe, I figured it best to zoom in this evening to join the meeting. And before we get to our proclamations recognizing our football squad and cheerleaders, we have one proclamation that we're going to do before the two of those. It's for an individual who has served in the township of Little Falls for over thirty years now, and she will be retiring at the end of this year. And we want to read a proclamation in her honor, and that individual is Andrea Trombino, who has again served in town for over thirty years. And the proclamation reads, whereas Andrea Trombino has honorably served the residents of the township of Little Falls since November of nineteen ninety-three, working in the municipal court as the deputy court administrator and the violations clerk. And whereas Ms. Trombino was promoted to court administrator and deputy violations clerk in October of nineteen ninety-four. And whereas Ms. Trombino has always worked closely with the residents, assisting them with any and all issues related to the municipal court. And whereas Ms. Trombino has been a respected member of the township's administrative staff since her employment with the township. And whereas the township wishes to honor her service to Little Falls for the past forty years, service that was provided with the utmost professionalism and competence. And whereas Ms. Trombino will retire from service to the township on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and we wish her all of the best in her retirement. Now, therefore, I, James Belford D'Amiano, mayor of the township of Little Falls, New Jersey, do hereby proclaim in the township of Little Falls, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, as Andrea Trombino Day. Congratulations, Andrea, on your retirement. We thank you for your service to this township for three decades, and we really appreciate everything that you have done here for the municipality. Congratulations. All right, we have two. All right, can everybody still hear me there? All right. So the next thing that we have this evening is our proclamation recognizing the Little Falls Hornets Junior Football Squad. This team this year had an incredible record. They had an eleven-and-oh record with a final victory in their championship game of twenty-five to six versus Glen Rock. And again, with a huge congrat- congratulations, we want to read a proclamation on their behalf. It reads, whereas it is the intention of the mayor and council of the township of Little Falls to focus attention on noteworthy occasions and individuals. And whereas school sports programs are an integral part of our community, giving our young residents a chance to participate in a healthy activity that fosters teamwork and builds strong character and lifelong skills. And whereas the township of Little Falls celebrates the Little Falls Junior Hornets Junior Football Squad on their championship and would like to extend our sincere congratulations to these athletes and their coaches and let them know how proud the community is of their accomplishments. And whereas the team's hard work, dedication, commitment, talent, and teamwork contributed to a successful undefeated season in which they had a record of eleven wins and zero losses. And whereas the team competed their sea- completed their season with a dominant twenty-five to six victory over the nine-and-one Glen Rock to secure the championship, and they are the two thousand and twenty-three Tri-County Youth Football League Junior Super Bowl Champions. Now it is fitting and proper that I, James Belford D'Amiano, mayor of the township of Little Falls, along with the township council, extend congratulations, best wishes, and continued success to the Little Falls Junior Hornets Junior Football Squad. Congratulations, team, on an incredible win this year.
Would you like to come up? Allison Goss? Where at all?
There it is.
Ryan Boats? Hey, Santiago? Rita Palucci? Michael Tavilla? Jordan Gonzalez? Frank Best?
Yeah.
Henry Bruce? Moon Hagan? Ryan Callahan? Freddie Smith?
Yeah.
Mookit Fargus? AJ Watson? Arthur Fernamola? TJ Falls? Tom Tadager? Brandon Tepur? Andrew Nevada? Ryan Thomas? Yeah, if I can start over here. Sure.
Boys. Boys. Guys, look forward. Just a little bit. Everybody just. That's great. That's part of it.
One, two, three.
All right, Council President, now we can do the proclamation for our cheerleaders. And everybody knows that behind every successful championship team is a group of individuals cheering for that team. And this year, we have a lot of thanks to give to our Little Falls Junior Hornets Junior and Senior squads for cheering for our junior team. And we're going to read a proclamation on their behalf, and it reads, whereas it is the intention of the mayor and council of the township of Little Falls to focus attention on noteworthy occasions and individuals. And whereas school sports programs are an integral part of our community, giving our young residents a chance to participate in a healthy activity that fosters teamwork and builds strong character and lifelong skills. Whereas the township of Little Falls celebrates the Little Falls Junior Hornets Junior and Senior Squad Cheerleaders and would like to extend our sincere congratulations to these athletes and their coaches and let them know how proud the community is of their accomplishments. And whereas the hard work, dedication, commitment, talent, and teamwork of both teams contributed to a memorable and fulfilling season. And whereas both teams did an outstanding job and made the best out of their circumstances with kindness and perseverance. Now it is fitting and proper that I, James Belford D'Amiano, mayor of the township of Little Falls, along with the township council, extend congratulations, best wishes, and continued success to the Little Falls Junior Hornets Junior and Senior Squad Cheerleaders.
Senior Squad Cheerleaders, and let me extend a sincere congratulations to those athletes and their coaches, let them know how proud the community is of their accomplishments. And whereas the hard work, dedication, commitment, and talent and teamwork of both teams contributed to a memorable and fulfilling season. And whereas both teams did an outstanding job and made the best of their circumstances with kindness and perseverance. Now it is fitting and proper that I, James Belford D'Amiano, mayor of the township of Little Falls, along with the township council, extend congratulations, best wishes to Little Falls Junior Hornets and Senior Squad Cheerleaders.
Here, um, roll through, we have everyone on the table. We have our. We have. Martin Thornton. So.
Yeah. Part.
And Peter. And. Zoe. Mira Rosa.
Oh, yeah.
Heather Earl.
Ah, no. What's? Tom.
Okay.
Congratulations, cheerleaders.
All right, look here, Tina, and also to the coaches.
But I'm showing him. Congratulations, cheerleaders.
For the teams required, we have Kylie Alminger. Eva Araco. Jonathan Nettie. Eda. San Sergio Butler. Imani Claudio. Nacho. Tom. Tami Saya. Tenito Dore. Chiquita Teneno. Levana Rojo. Zerzade Ok. Tony Mina. Hot King Smart Boy. Unhappened in. Anthony Monces. And Tom. Del Five. Tyler Vicenza. And Key. For those that are me, it's Hannah. It's Hannah. It is K. Far.
Congratulations, athletes and parents.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That we're even a do.
So. No, this sounds a lot better than these two.
Mayor, can you hear us?
It's blowing up.
Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, we can't hear him. Wait, Mayor, say that again?
Can you hear me at all or no?
I could hear him. I guess it's low. It's just low, I could hear him.
That's because the volume was turned down during the fire department meeting.
Mayor?
Yep.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to add about this evening with the flooding? Or anything else that you'd like to talk about at the council meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and everybody can hear me there right now? All right, so, yeah, the, you know, unfortunately, we are currently facing within the next, uh, really twelve hours or so, the banks of the Passaic River are really beginning to, to, to breach in, in a number of areas in town. Uh, you know, the entire Parkway section of town, the Wood Cliff section of town uh, are at serious risk of, of having a substantial flood. Uh, I'd never liked to be an alarmist, I've never raised the issues of flooding when we didn't truly believe flooding may be imminent. Uh, this is one of those circumstances where we are going to begin uh, advising residents to evacuate, particularly in the Parkway section of town. That's everybody in that entire section of town near the river. Uh, this flood looks like it's going to be coming over around seven AM tomorrow morning over the, 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 really kind of the area where we begin to have serious flooding issues. It may be earlier than that, and the predictions continue to change. We do continue to monitor them, uh, you know, hour by hour. The issue is this. If this river breaches, we have never dealt with a flood in that area of town where we have had these, this number of homes removed. The current throughout that area of town is going to be very different, and we anticipate far stronger than it has ever been in the past. We are urging residents to evacuate this evening, uh, to, you know, pack up, take the time and get out. Because unfortunately, if this river does breach and it is flowing too strong, we may not have any way to get in and, or be able to get you out. So we are asking that everybody begin to leave now. You can call the fire department if you're looking for assistance and shutting off any utilities that you may have in your house. They will be able to assist with that. We have individuals from our local cert team, the county cert team, our office of emergency management handing out, hand-delivering letters and notifications to every single home that may be affected in that area of town. We know there's a number of individuals who may not follow social media, who may not get email blasts, who may not check the website. So we are making sure that we blanket the entire town with paper copies of informational, uh, yeah, packets with, with respect to leaving that area. What you could do, what you should do, where you can park your vehicles. As far as vehicles go, you can park in any of the municipal lots. St. Agnes has also opened up their parking lot to accommodate residents. Uh, I do encourage everyone to get out before it is too late. This is unfortunately a river that when it does breach, uh, is going to be, uh, very difficult for us to get an after. And I say that because a good portion of this neighborhood is actually currently underwater. And it's underwater, but for the fact that we have all of these pumps currently running to keep everybody dry right now. Uh, if and when it reaches the banks and the pumps are completely underwater, it becomes a point where we are literally pumping out water from below the water level. So all we're doing is recirculating at that point. Uh, and that is the point when we will shut off the pumps, because running them twenty-four-seven to just put water back into the river that's coming over anyway uh, does nothing to actually lower the water level in that section of town. And we want to ensure that the pumps don't burn out, so that once the flood does begin to recede, we can turn the pumps back on and begin eliminating the water from that section of town. Uh, and if we lose a pump, the, some of these pumps, pump, you know, fifty-some odd thousand gallons per minute, uh, and losing that type of, of flow of water in keeping our area dry moving forward uh, would be extremely detrimental. So we will continue to keep them running until it is absolutely too late, and they are completely inundated and unable to provide any benefit. Uh, again, I, I'm really asking everyone to be on high alert. We need to ensure that you are safe. I know this is absolutely a, there's no good time, but this is absolutely a terrible time of year for something like this to happen. I want everybody to please keep themselves, their children, their pets, their keepsakes, uh, safe, and doing that now, early, before that becomes too late, is really the best way to ensure that that happens. Another major fear and concern that we have is temperatures are plummeting. Uh, we are going from over sixty degrees today, when we had the rain hitting, to below freezing tomorrow. Uh, it is going to play a major role, a major factor in the ability for individuals to stay in their homes, especially if the utilities turn off any of the utilities to their homes, whether that be gas to heat their home or electric. And unfortunately, that means sometimes people will go to electric heat if they don't longer have gas, which also poses major issues, especially when there's water around, uh, and it could be a fire hazard. So we are really asking everybody to be smart about, smart about this. I know everybody wants to stay in their home. I know, no, I know nobody wants to leave their home. Uh, but this is some, this is really a time where we are asking everybody near the Passaic River to really be, take precautions, to evacuate if you can right now. Uh, because again, our ability to save you after may be limited. Um, we have had several meetings just today with the office of emergency management, our police, or fire, or DPW, or building departments, everybody else involved. Um, we are as prepared as we can be to address this flood. Uh, hopefully, well, everything that I'm saying right now is a complete waste of my breath, a waste of your time, and you evacuate for no reason. That would be the best case scenario. But unfortunately, we need to prepare for the worst case scenario. We have done so. Uh, if you need anything that is an absolute emergency, dial nine-one-one. Otherwise, everybody's getting the information for all of the non-emergent numbers. Police non-emergent number is nine-seven-three-two-five-six-zero-two-hundred. You can contact them with any other major concerns or questions that you may have related to any, a non-emergent issue. Uh, again, we are, as a town, here for you. We are hoping for the absolute best. We are prepared for the worst. Uh, and I wish everybody the absolute best and everybody well. Uh, I hate to follow that up with this statement, but this is our last meeting of the year. I want to wish everybody a very happy holiday. I am hoping that everybody in Little Falls will be able to have a very happy holiday and that everybody is, is safe in their homes. Um, and again, the best to everybody, happy holidays, happy new year.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions or concerns from the council? Uh, Councilmember Venteri?
Mayor, um, wondering if you could do a couple things, because I know when the notice went out about where to evacuate, and obviously it was a map. It seems like there's a little confusion, because I know your phone's been blowing up, ours have been as well, with people asking, is it my street? Is there a way if we can send out another update to, to specifically list out the streets so that people can understand?
The, the issue with that was, is on the initial post that I posted in a comment, I posted a map of the area that may be affected. And unfortunately, when people share the original post, it doesn't show the comments that are also with it. So what I have done is I've edited my initial post to provide an update with that map now available. I'm hoping that will fix the issue across the board for all of the social media blasts that are being shared. Um, our town email blast has gone out again with this. The real easy way to know this is if you are hand-delivered one of these letters, uh, you are certainly in the area that may be affected. Um, this is, and just for a description of the area, this is really the area, uh, between the Orchard-Greyrock area on the furthest east side of Main Street, all the way down, pat, down to, uh, along Main Street, down to Riverview Drive. Uh, so that includes everybody on Parkway, William, Lewis, Zelif, uh, and, and, and that entire area of town, as well as the Wood Cliff air, uh, Parkway, I, I did say that, as well as the, uh, Wood Cliff area of town as you move further, uh, west. So those are really the streets in the areas that may be affected, including a little tiny side street off of those. Uh, again, I caution everybody to, to be careful, uh, including those on Riker, on Michael John, uh, that entire area of town, as it may come and creep closer to them. We are looking at a projected and predicted number that is much higher uh, than some of the, the, the prior storms that we've had, uh, in any recent history. Of course, some of the prior hurricanes years ago have provided numbers about this range, and we've seen the, the catastrophic damage that that can, that that can cause. So again, please be safe, and, uh, those are the areas. Hopefully, uh, up the updated post will, uh, provide some clarification.
Are there any other questions?
For, um, Mayor, another thing that keeps coming up too is residents are reaching out, asking how they can help, whether it's donating items that would potentially be needed. Um, you know, what's the best advice, uh, we can point some residents in the right direction?
Yeah, so, uh, right now, you know, at the current moment, we do have crews out that are dropping. Yeah, so, right now, you know, at the current moment, we do have crews out that are dropping some literature, again, this informational sheet to all of the homes that may be impacted. One of the best things you can actually do is, God forbid, we do have any issues or any flooding there, staying away is one of the biggest things that you can do to help, unless you're there for a specific or particular reason. Driving through the neighborhoods after flood is nothing anybody ever wants. So that, that is certainly one thing. What you can do if you are looking to provide some assistance moving forward, as tasks and things become available, we will be using our civic center as the location where individuals who are displaced, who have nowhere else to go, can stay. That, that will be staffed in the event we have individuals who need help, who have, who have some needs. You can go to the civic center and find out what tasks may be available at that time. You may be als- you may also be able to call the police non-emergent number to find out if there's any things that you may be able to assist with. If for now, for the time being, there is sand, there are sandbags that are being provided at Parkway in West End at the intersection closer to Main Street. I, I don't know currently, and now that we've been in meetings for some time, if there's anybody there that needs some help filling sandbags, that, that is always something that, that may help. Again, things are, this is going to be a, a moving and unraveling, you know, target here, we're going to have to adapt as, as things change. So at the current moment, again, there's not a ton that we can, we can do to help in, in that sense, unless you know somebody in the area who may need some help relocating some of their, their items, their, their personal items, you know, their keepsakes, things like that.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to dispense with council member reports, there'll be no attorney report. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, second by Councilman Ventura, all those in favor? All those opposed, Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may use the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, however, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time, the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you, Mrs. Kraus. The floor is now open. Mr. Kruja, anyone in our chat room? Is anyone in the council chambers that would like to come before us? Seeing no one, have a motion to close the public comment?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Hablitz, second by Councilman Ventura, all those in favor? All those opposed, that motion carries? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hablitz. There was one additionally. Staff was a little bit tied up with the flooding. That's a H resolution authorizing the submission of grant application with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs and now seventy-five thousand dollars to provide fire, fire department turnout gear. I apologize, that was added last minute, but the staff got a little bit tied up today. All, all, Mrs. Kraus, go to the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hablitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Ventura?
Yes.
Council President Scovva?
Yes, have a motion to open meeting to the public for general matters?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel, second by Councilman Ventura, are those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may use the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be, are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time, the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. Meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open. Mr. Kruja, anyone in our chat? Is there anyone in our council chambers that would like to come before us? Seeing no one, have a motion to close the public comment?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Ventura, second by Councilwoman Hablitz, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries? Have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel?
Second.
Second by Councilman Murphy, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, this meeting is now closed.